All right, let's call to order the school board meeting for October 14th, 2019. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. On our agenda tonight, we have the superintendent's report, then we have several discussion items. Those include the school foundation presentation, strategy one, restorative practices, facilities update, superintendent evaluation summary, policy development first reading 524, 616, and 806, policy development second reading policies 514, 515, and 522. Then we'll have the consent agenda. The action agenda includes an employment agreement for the superintendent, a labor agreement for nutrition services, approval of the second reading of policies 514 bullying prohibition, 515 protection and privacy of people record, and 522 sex discrimination. After that, we'll have communications and transmittals followed by adjournment. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Karen, is there a second? Second one by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, 7-0. First up on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
Good evening Chair Gores, members of the board. This evening for my superintendent's report, I would like to highlight a couple of items connected to the work that's happening here in the school district. And the first thing that I would like to share a little bit of information about is our out of school time task force. As you all are aware, as a result of the school board approving last year the change in start times for the 2021 school year, we have entered upon a process to really look at our start times and to determine a start time, excuse me, not start times, but look at our out of school time options to determine out of school time options that meet overall academic, socio-emotional developmental needs of our students. And we're really focusing on, as a task force, making a recommendation in the area of academic programs, enrichment and recreation opportunities, and childcare options. Thus far, we've held two meetings. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 4th, which is the meeting where we'll start to design different options for out of school time for our elementary school age students. So we're extremely excited about the work that's occurred so far. I'm thankful for all of the students, staff, parents and guardians, and community members that have participated in the process. Thanks to the city of St. Louis Park, Parks and Recs for participating, Perspectives is participating. And I believe that with the collaboration of all of the different people in groups coming together, that we're going to come up with some programming and options that are great for our students and our families. The next piece that I would like to highlight is connected to our high school schedule task force. The purpose of this task force is to examine the current seven-period model. And as we look at the seven-period model, we're working to determine a schedule to meet the academic, social developmental needs of all of the high school students while also allowing for staff collaboration. As a task force, we've held one meeting so far, and our next meeting is scheduled for November 6th. And our next meeting will really focus on looking at the needs of students, understanding what the students' experience currently is under the seven-period model that we're using, and determining if that's meeting our overall academic, social, emotional, and health needs. And we'll have two meetings after our next meeting with the goal of determining what an optimal schedule will be as we look forward to the future, either being 2021 or for the 21, 22 school year. It hasn't been determined yet when that would be going to place just simply because, you know, there may be, depending on what the change is, several different options and things that we have to look at. For example, if we were to move to a four-period schedule, it would require professional development for staff that may take some time. So there's still some things that we need to look at, but I know that we're moving forward with the hope of determining what schedule that will meet the needs of all of our students and staff. And the last piece that I would like to highlight is the upcoming parade of schools, which is scheduled for Saturday, October 26th, from 9:00 to noon. And the three schools in which will be open to the public as a part of this parade of schools would be At Corlele Elementary, all of the classrooms and media center, Park Spanish Immersion Elementary School, which will include all of the classrooms and community spaces in that building, and the high school, which will, the main office will be open there for the public to tour. And just want to take a moment to thank the public for all of their support, particularly the vote in 2017, where the community supported the $100.9 million bond referendum that has allowed us to move forward with all of these wonderful construction projects at our sites. And that concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you very much. Parade of schools, sounds good. Right. First up, our discussion item is the school foundation presentation. We'll be hearing from DJ Ham, and he's not alone, so I'll need him to introduce who's with him. Thank you, guys.
Thanks for, can you hear me? Thanks for having us tonight, members of the board. My name's DJ Ham. We're really looking forward to presenting tonight. We haven't been here in a couple of years, so we're really excited to share the impact that we've had on the schools and the community and some of the efforts that we're doing going forward. I'm here with my colleague Fritz, who sits on the board.
Good evening, I'm Fritz Vandover. I'm a Susan Lindgren parent, St. Louis Park resident, and we're very happy to hear and talk to you all some more.
So again, DJ, proud community member, that was my wife here in St. Louis Park. We're right down the street on Zandvoort with our two cats. Super love the neighborhood, and we're really excited. I love supporting the community. I just want to, next slide. Just want to share a little about where we've come from. So in the past, this whole foundation started with friends basically sitting across from each other at a dinner table and saying, hey, how can we better support our kids? How can we help them? So they shook each other's hands, made a compact, and said, let's raise some money. We recognize that teachers are buying stuff out of their own pockets. We're paying stuff for our students and our kids to go to different events. How can we better help them so that we can augment these costs and we can support the school district and the teachers in different initiatives that they want to do? Thinking about where we're going, so our current, the folks who started this organization and who initiated all of the great work that we're currently doing now have transitioned off the board. They've recognized that as the community changes, as the kids get older, the board needs to reflect the community. So we're strategically trying to request that certain people become engaged. We have a whole new set of board. There's only two additional members that are staying on as they are retaining tons of knowledge that we still tap on a regular basis, and they're super helpful. But our goal is to have alumni, and have teachers, and have administrators, and have other community members sitting on our board, not just sitting on our board though, but also as on key groups. Maybe it's fundraising, maybe it's communications. There's all types of ways to be involved in the organization. So, thanks. Our mission's pretty simple, to enhance the learning for students of St. Louis Park Public Schools. I typically don't like reading on slides, but I read this over and over and over again because this grounds us in exactly who we are and what we're doing. So every time I see it, I just have to read it, to enhance the learning for students of St. Louis Park Public Schools. And I hope that if there's one thing that you take away, it's that our sole mission and what we do is this. We are here to ensure that all of the students are getting the best academic opportunities possible. So some of our funding areas for our grants are, as on the screen, arts, math, science, reading, and transitions. And Fritz, is going to go over some of those.
Yeah, so I have the great pleasure of leading our grant selection process and committee every year, which has been, right from the start, I started in, I think, the fall of 2017 and got to come right on board with that. So I have a 20-year background in higher education and in educational technology. So I bring, I bring a lot of technology help to the board, but I also bring a wealth of knowledge about pedagogy and other things that I, I can speak the language of teachers, and we have teachers on our community that help with our process. But before we get into the kinds of grants, we wanted to talk to you about the kinds of the funds we've given over the years. So this is, every year that the foundation has given funds to the, to the school district, you can see that is a trend line, that's not just a graphic. We've been on an upward, upward scale ever since. So it's our mission to not only continue to fund, but to continue to fund at higher levels whenever possible. So that is one of our core, core values.
Fritz, those were total grants per year, but are the grants not made up of a lot of smaller grants to individual teachers and classrooms to get to that total?
Yeah, well, after I talk about some grants, I'll show, I'll show the breakdown for this current academic year so you can get a sense of where we break down by school and by our four, four key focus areas. So these are just, I think there's three or five of these in here, just a flavor over the last couple of years of some of our grants. You know, we, we had a grant request from Steve Schmitz at the high school to replace instruments that were very much loved and worn out, and we were happy to make that grant. And he, there's just some information here about what that has allowed him to do and his students to do. It's allowed him to really bring in and increase the percentage of students of color in the program. This is an unfunded program, they just, they're coming on their own. If it's a class, it might be an after, after-school activity, but it's, it's really, it's really enhanced and empowered and amplify what he's doing. This is a picture of these students at the Tower Light bringing the, bringing these new instruments and what they've learned to the residents of Tower Light to work with them. Another program we funded was a musical at Aquila. And so just, these are just a couple of quotes from, from parents actually, of what the impact of their students being in a musical allowed and enabled for those students. So my son feels valued, and thank you for building confidence, self-esteem in my daughter. So in the science field, STEM is a big topic. So math and science, we get a lot of grant requests for math and sciences. One of them was from this year, it was for some new equipment for the physics program in the high school. And it's already, it's already having a big impact. These things have just landed. So Dan Ruzek, who's the teacher, said, look, I'm already getting better results for the kids in a much shorter amount of time. So I just want to paint the picture that these aren't necessarily ginormous grants, but they are high impact, and all of our funds, we don't have any overhead, it's, we're on all volunteer board. So every penny goes towards, goes towards, every penny that we can grant goes towards students, staff, and student activities. So we do things like audiobooks, we've done that. And here we have 280 students who qualify for this, so we have a, we, you know, little grants have a far reach. And we're even getting to some things like teacher professional development. And we had a grant this year from Darryl Young at the high school to help support a teacher retention program for teachers and staff of color around the district, not just the high school. So, you know, we're, within our scope and our mission, we're trying to do as much as we possibly can. So you had asked a question, Nancy, about proposals by breakdown. So here you can see in 19 and 20, approximate breakdown by school. You know, the high school and the middle school had a lot this year, but we, we try to hit every school and, and even those categories that span it. So we get, we're very fortunate to get grants that span all elementary schools or the whole district. So, and we even reached on into early childhood education. So we always want to make sure those folks know they're encouraged and welcome their grant proposals. So some years are a little different than others, but we try to spread it across all schools and all, all parts of the district. And then by our focus areas from this current academic year, this is the breakdown by our reading, arts, math, and science and transition. So again, every year's a little different, but always something comes up in each one. So.
DJ. And the one thing that it doesn't show is the, the number of grants and the cost, right? So there might be more grants with a fewer amount because that was the grant request, but there might be fewer grants in a larger amount because, again, that was a request. If it was a larger grant request, and we grant up to 10,000, right?
So yeah, we do three, individuals can apply for up to 3,000, collaborative grants can be up to 10,000. We have done several of those in the last few years.
Yep. So as we look forward, so that this kind of gets to, you've seen the impact of what we're doing, it's positive. We continue to give more and more to the school district and the teachers and the, in support of the students. There's some key things that we need. So we need everyone as much as possible to learn more about us, what we do, and to tell as many people as possible. We had a very core group of folks that were super dedicated and did a lot of work, but not everyone in the community knows about us. Every single time I tell someone about what we do, they're, oh, they're like, I had no clue that we had a foundation that gives this amount of money year over year to the schools. It's also making meaningful connections for us. We really need folks like all of you here to introduce us to business leaders, to introduce us to advocates in the community, to other people that you think would be impactful and supportive of the board, and that we can start to build a relationship and say, how can we together support the schools? Also volunteering, you know, we fully recognize that everyone has talents to give and not necessarily money. We have lots of opportunities around that. We have lots of skill sets that we need. Fritz brings some amazing skill sets. There's tons of folks on the board now that bring some amazing tools. And we always need marketers, we always need data-driven folks. We're looking for a wide array of viewpoints as well, a diverse array. And then the last one is rate giving. As we looked at, you know, as we onboard a new board and it's a younger board, we're needing more and more grassroots dollars, and we're relying less and less on high donor dollars, the, the bigger gifts. Yes, those are in our future, and we're looking to strategically place ourselves with folks that will give more. But currently, we're looking for lots of people to give a little bit of money because that's how we're going to grow the foundation's awareness, right? That's how we're going to create a grassroots movement that this is something that everyone wants to support. With that, any questions?
Any questions, Mary?
I beat Ken. I just want to say that I had the privilege of being the school board's liaison to the foundation per year, and my experience there only amplified my commitment as a donor and as a supporter because of the amazing work that they do. And all of you are just so committed and so gracious in your, in your support of the schools. And I have personally loved listening to the teachers and the grant recipients at the grant night talk very, with much love and enthusiasm for the work that they have been able to do with our district students because of this money. So my other plug would be, the only thing that I think maybe was missed off of the, what do we need? Is we need our teachers to ask you for money. Because when our teachers ask you for money, then we are able to go out and say as donors, look, could we please get more donors because this is what else we need to fund? We don't have enough money to fund these things that are totally worthwhile and that deserve your support. So kind of the, if we build it, they will come. Let's, teachers, if you're listening, school leaders, please bring your great ideas to the foundation, and they will work to get you the money. Thank you both very much.
And now I am liaison onto the board. And it is a rewarding task that we do. I was wondering, out of all the grants that come in, what percentage roughly gets awarded?
So this year, we are at about a 70% granting rate, you know, if you're looking at, not dollars, but just, you know, X number of grant applications and Y number of grant applications, we're at 70%.
Which goes back to what Mary was saying, you know, put it in there, you may get it.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things, one of our goals is, we were batting around ideas, we don't want to burn up too much time, but we do want to be just naturally known by when someone's saying, oh, I get this great idea to teach this new way or this new curriculum, we'll go to the foundation. So we, we are trying to grow visibly, not, not only amongst donors and the community, but in the schools as well. So we're always looking for, and bugging Sarah about how do we, how do we connect with the teachers? How do we make ourselves known? We were at this fall, the teacher welcome day, I was standing in front of a banner outside while people were getting coffee and, you know, trying not to look too, too desperate to talk and get to know everybody, but that's one of the things we're trying to do. So any, any way you can help us do that is certainly appreciated.
I think I should clarify that it doesn't just have to be teachers, right? We've had librarians and social workers.
Any staff, any, you know, any staff and teacher staff, you know, administrators have applied for grants and some have gotten them, so.
So I noticed your website up there, foundation@slppsf.org, right?
Well, this is our email address.
That's the email address?
Yes, and our, and we had a URL, it's just slppsf.org as well as our, as our website. And I believe, well, we can get it into your materials so you have it in.
I just want to, so people at home and people who want to apply for grants could go on your webpage and see the details, see the app, I'm assuming the application, the timeframes, and know what. And is there a general timeframe by when the grant apps have to be in every year?
Thank you for that perfect segue. So we generally, the, the application cycle opens up right around the middle of February, February 15th, and it's open until April 30th. And then we get our decisions back to applicants by the middle of June is our goal every year.
It's just a wonderful organization, and I'm so glad to see the successors to the original old guard. So thank you really for everything you're doing, and come again.
Thank you for having us.
All right. Next up is our strategy one, from our strategic plan, strategy one and its restorative practices. And with us today, we have Michelle Edwens as one of our school social workers, and Carrie Shooter in. I got it close. Peter Hobart principal.
Well, thank you Chair Person Gores and the board. We appreciate you having us here. As said, I'm Carrie Shooter, in principle, Peter Hobart.
And I'm Michelle Edwens, the school social worker at Peter Hobart.
So tonight, we are just really excited to be able to talk to you a bit about restorative practices here at St. Louis Park, and just connect it a bit to what we're doing, what we've been doing in our hope of really just expanding it and the opportunity of why we are here to talk to you about it tonight. Restorative practices here in St. Louis Park, the reason why we are, this slide that we have right now is looking at our mission, so the mission of St. Louis Park, and really looking at, you know, grounding us in what we already currently do really aligns with restorative practices in education. So when we look at that and the idea around, you know, nurturing the capacity of people, making sure that we're engaging with one another and their environment, and really supporting the respects of the dignity and worth of all. So really going back to the idea, one of the pieces that Superintendent Osai had started us off with, this mission idea around Ubuntu, the I am because we are, and it's the universal belief and the connection and the bonding about humanity. It really aligns those two missions, and restorative practices does that. And so one of the things that Michelle will get into in a little bit in a moment as we get into the slides is really the idea that restorative practices is grounded in the idea that there's multiple layers to it. And so at the foundation, it's really about building this community, and that is something that I think is, what is unique and beautiful about St. Louis Park. And so that is something that when we sat down, Michelle and I, and thought about how are we going to explain, what does restorative practices look like, what we really wanted ideally was to be able to bring students here. And if we could have them share with you a bit about what that looks like, that would be the core of how I think is the best way to do that. And so we'll be able to do that a little bit in a moment about what that is. But really, my hope for these first few slides is really just to show that we're not necessarily doing anything really radically different. I think we're just being really more intentional about the good work that we're doing. It's just being able to really dive into the importance of really connecting us, and that's one of the pieces with restorative practices. So in the next piece here, we're just excited to be able to share with you about how we've been able to really accelerate and deepen the work that we're doing around restorative practices. And Michelle's going to share a little bit about how that was possible.
So some of our buildings have been doing some restorative practices, but we wanted to be able to deepen it a little further, and we became aware of the Prairie Care Child and Family Fund Grant through one of our community members and a former Peter Hobart parent, Laura Dezen, who does some fundraising for them through her Shout Out Loud campaign, an event that she does every year. So we applied for this child and family fund grant, and we're able to receive it. And Linda is one of the representatives that joined us here today. They gave us $32,000 to deepen this work across the entire district. So though you see the Peter Hobart principal and myself here today from Peter Hobart, this is something that is rolling out across our whole district with representatives from each building being a part of it. So as Carrie mentioned, when we thought, who best to talk about what restorative practices? Kids do a lot better than we do, and so we have this video from some of our students to kind of just explain it a little further. And they're very excited to explain it to the school board and teach to them. They do a really good job of it, but you can't hear it.
Thank you, Town Marvel.
I think circles help us come together and talk about whatever we need to talk about.
I think about circles, they are good and they're not that bad at all. That circles, it helps you talk about what you think and what you think and how you feel. And how I feel about circles is that they, is that they're good, they're not that bad. They help people, they help people talk about their own thinking and what they're saying when they think happens. And the number five is that circles, they are good for people, and it also helps people a lot more for them to talk to, so they can speak the truth.
We were having some problems, and we came together and did a circle, and we helped figure out our problems and have them solved, so that we can feel, we believe in that.
I've been like, about like, you don't know what's going on, if they're lying or if they're trying to help you or not. Like, you get, like, get their side of the story before you start, like, assuming, or yeah.
So kids have their agency and their voice in circles, and that's one of their most powerful pieces. And that's why we wanted to bring their voices to you here today. There are different levels of circles. There are different levels of circles. And so tier one circles are done within classrooms environments to build community. So it's something we do every day, not that dissimilar from morning meeting or developmental design that happens in middle school, really to just bring students together. Tier two is usually to do some sort of celebrating or talking about something that's been difficult. So if there's been a disagreement in the class, or if we're kind of having a climate issue within the classroom, we might do a circle to kind of address that. And a tier three circle is a circle to repair harm. And a Tier Three circle is a circle to repair harm. So within that video, you had examples of kids who had had all different types of circles. What's common among all of them is that children have voice, children are seen and heard, and have a chance to share their own point of view, and maybe to be able to see someone else's perspective as well, often to see someone else's perspective as well. These are some examples of classroom circles. This is Tier One circles. One example is one that we do with staff, because we also want staff to feel included, a part of, and to have good role modeling around how we do circles. The other two are in elementary classrooms. And these are some examples of Tier Two circles. So in one of these, we were kind of, there was a lot of talking happening in class, a lot of disruptions. We sat down as a class to talk about how that feels, what each child's part of that was, and what they could commit to do differently in the future to make that feel different in the classroom. And we circled back the next week, and it had improved the classroom climate. The other one is in one of our developmentally cognitively disabled classrooms, where there had been an incident at the end of the day that was pretty upsetting for a number of kids. And we came back the next day and had a circle around it. And regardless of what atmosphere we were in, what grade level we're in, what adaptive skills we are in, kids are able to do circle and talk about what happened for them and what they thought about it. And that's been really powerful. So where we want to go, one piece that we started this year with the grant from Prairie Care Child and Family Fund is helping build some basic trainings, what a circle is, what restorative language is, among our staff, our students. And as the year goes on, we're starting to roll this out with families more. And so we appreciate the opportunity to be here and share it with you guys and to have that shared out with our community.
And then the last pieces around that is just wanting to make sure that we are really having a common understanding about what it is that we're currently doing, and then just taking a look at what current policies and practices that we have and making sure that that's aligned to our strategic plan. And then as we move forward, really wanting to be sure that all staff and students and really families just are aligned and involved in what we're doing with restorative practices. So, and that is a process that we're looking to do, and we know that it won't happen overnight, but just that we are having that direction and moving together. And so as we do that, we're just excited that it is a process that we will do collectively together. And so that is, is there any questions?
Go ahead, Ken.
Michelle, I don't know if maybe I tuned out or something, but you did step one and two, or Tier One and Two. Did you mention Tier Three, how that works?
I don't know that I did, so thank you for picking up on it. So Tier Three is a smaller circle to repair harm. So if some conflict has arisen, kids can request it, staff can request it, and it's about coming together to repair what's happened. So examples of questions that we would use are, what happened? So they can hear each person's point of view, and we find the truth somewhere in the middle that typically. What were you thinking at the time? What do you think about now that you've heard each other's point of view? And what do you need to do to make things right? So embedded within that, perspective-taking, reflection, and then ability to repair harm. So that's usually what's done during Tier Three circles. Thank you.
You know, we had the chance to be with you for a meeting before this one to hear more and more about it. And I just, one of the stories you told us was how Tier One can be used early on in kindergarten to kind of as a circle to help students learn to sit and listen for a while, because that's not a skill that every kindergartner comes in, and that's a learning skill. And if you could just tell us how circle can be used for that purpose as well, I think it's a story worth sharing.
So one of our kindergarten classrooms uses restorative practice right from the beginning of the year and has for several years now. And an example he does is would you rather? So he'll offer a prompt of, they have the agreements, they set up the circle, and then would you rather have an ice cream cone or a piece of pie? And then each kid goes around and gets a chance with this talking piece to say like, I'd rather have an ice cream cone, and then they giggle, and then they pass it around. And part of that learning is just how to sit and listen to each classmate. And another part of it is to be able to speak up for yourself in the room as well. And as the year goes on, the prompts get a little bit longer as they build their stamina and listening to each other. But it's just such a great example about how this can be used for a variety of needs at a variety of levels.
I just wanted to thank Linda and Prairie Care very much for the opportunity for the district to explore this. Thank you.
Okay, these are comments and questions. So I think that, I'm excited first and foremost about this, the path that we're going down to take this test. And to comment on that Tier One, learning, if we adopt this as a practice, a common practice, then all students will get this type of practice, how to conduct yourself in a circle, and what it's about, and all those things. So I was, I just wanted to tell you quickly, I was first introduced to restorative practice when one of my kids was going through Equila, and we were reading Touching Spirit Bear. So I, at nighttime, we would read it together, and I thought it was an excellent book. And so then it kind of got me motivated to look at restorative practice for discipline behaviors, and then you found there's a plethora of information out there. So I'm extremely happy that St. Louis Park Public Schools is going down this path to investigate me, and thank you for offering us this opportunity. No questions.
One of the examples I think you shared with us, and you may have said it in your presentation, so I'm sorry if I'm repeating, is if there's been a conflict outside the classroom between a couple of students, for example, you might have a Tier Three circle with those two students to kind of work through their particular issues. But if the class witnessed it, they're all a little off-base because they've had that experience that's kind of thrown them off too. And so you can bring those two students back into the classroom, have a circle in the classroom, and how does that help the learning?
Well, it helps everyone to understand that the conflict is addressed and the tension's kind of let out of the room. If you've seen two kids get into a fight or something like that, you don't know what to expect. And maybe the two of them have gone off and repaired this, and they come back in, and everyone else is still on, kind of pins and needles up, is this going to happen again? And people are hyper vigilant, and we know that when kids are in that state, they aren't learning that well. They aren't hearing the great learning and teaching that's happening in the classroom. So by those two kids repairing it, but then also coming back and sharing that with everyone else, it just reduces the tension and increases the teacher's ability to teach within space. And reduces the ability for that to happen again, because everyone knows it has been addressed.
Such a great, great way of going forward.
The other thing I'm struck by with this, and I'm fully supportive and have been for this work for a long time, we hear from employers how important the EQ skills are along with the IQ skills. And so when we can immerse our students in this from the beginning of their academic career, they come out of it at the end very, very strong in both dimensions, which is exactly what the workforce is requiring now, as people need to work on teams to get projects done, as people need to minimize conflict to get the work done. And if you've already had a chance to practice this in multiple dimensions, we are fully serving the whole child. And so I'm really excited about this work, and thank you very much for helping lead it throughout our district. And thank you.
Thank you so much for taking the time to come here, share the good work that's being done, and thank you so much, Linda. And please extend our thanks to Prairie Care Child and Family Fund for helping us do better with this work.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next up on our agenda is the facilities update with Tom Bravo, our facilities manager.
Chairperson Gores, Superintendent Osai, board. I want to kind of share with you three things. Number one, the things that we've accomplished that people are going to see when Sarah's going to be talking to again about creative schools, the things that are still ongoing, as well as projects, and what you're going to expect next summer when we start the next phase of the projects. So as we move forward here, I want to kind of share with you Park Spanish Immersion, just some pictures, again, the new entryway. You can see the curving itself, it meets the ADA requirements. Also, it's a lower type curving so that people are able to access the building if they are disabled or special needs and things like that. Signings are still coming. We're just going to get it up fast enough. We want to open up the school, of course, to get it going. But as everybody knows, that with MEA this week, our contractors are all geared up and getting things rolling, so they'll be at the sites Wednesday night, all day Thursday and Friday to complete the punchless items that we asked them to get done, and to complete some of the other things that haven't been 100% completed. We know that people are excited to get those things done, and we are too, because we want to, they want to get paid, and I want them done, so we get that going. You can see the front entryway, it's nice and bright, all glass around. But look at the desk where the receptionist is at. It has a high-low type area, and the low part, again, is showing how we looked at all types of facets, from special needs to the little kids, to wheelchair, and then the higher ones for, you know, the taller kids, so forth. So we're making things more adjustable and more standardized, as well as sustainable. If you look in here, there's a Park Spanish Immersion cafeteria itself, again, bright, real bright, up on the ceiling, you can see some dark type panels there. Those are sound absorption panels, so that, you know, the kids can enjoy talking to each other and so forth, but not drowning out the whole area and people not hearing what's going on. You see it's really wide and open, flooring that's cleanable, durable. And then we have two lines in the kitchen area so that we can serve our students and get them to the tables so that they can enjoy their foods as well as talk to each other and enjoy it at the time that they're there. We have a nice big media center, if you can look at that, where there's room for people to just, you know, be there and read and learn and so forth. We have what's called a maker space. Space is really bright, has a lot of tables there, so the students could make things, creative things that I wish this was here when I was going to school, something like that. That's kind of cool.
I can just really quickly, Tom, add that the maker space was funded by a grant from the St. Louis Park Public Schools Foundation a couple of years ago. Just want to tie everything together there for a second.
That's good. Didn't know that. It's good to know. And then we have the Next Century Classrooms. As you can see, when people go to this creative schools, they're not going to see the students there first, but I think they can vision what we put there so that the students can be in an environment where they can learn even more than what they've learned now, and have that relaxation of just being comfortable in the environment that they're in. So you can see that they're sitting on the benches, different types of furniture, even on the floor, where we have, again, carpeting itself throughout the classrooms. And more of the same of Next Century Classrooms. Flexible, flexible learning. Now, in the exterior part, there's, you know, a lot of people who are anxious, just wondering, when is that playground going to be done and so forth? And, you know, we're not trying to give out excuses, because everybody knows that August was the wettest month in the state of Minnesota and so forth. And we had some, we had some real difficult challenges trying to get the foundations in, trying to get the structures in. I can tell you, by the end of this week, it's going to be done. We're very excited about that. A couple of things that we still will not be able to complete, but will not impact students from using the beautiful playground that the city of St. Louis Park helped contribute when we start building this. And then we have all the landscaping around that space that's going to grow in time and make it more beautiful than what it is right now. As you can see from the parking lot, we have great big stalls. We haven't had any concerns with the buses and so forth coming in and doing what they needed to do to drop off our students and pick them up. Great big turnaround back there, and the flow just works really well. They're very, very happy.
Tom?
A quickie. I drive by there quite frequently, almost every day, and I look down intentionally to see if they've gotten that done. And there's actually green stuff on there now, around the playground. So we're really close to being done with that. It's looking fantastic.
Well, thank you. Yeah, they sent me an email today that they'll be done by Friday.
So, so Tom, just to clarify, if I'm a PSI parent with a child who wants to get outside for recess on that playground, as opposed to the playground they've been using, you know, the other side of the building, are they going to come back from MEA on Monday? And our expectation, if the contractors are telling us, are able to accomplish what they've said, is that the playground will be up and operational on Monday?
That's their expectation.
I hope that's true.
Yeah. I mean, again, you know, again, I'm not giving excuses, but there has been a few obstacles there, and I appreciate people being patient and understanding that it wasn't intentional. We wanted to get it done, but now we're getting it.
And I had a really great time at the welcome back night for PSI, and I had a personal tour by Kelly Etienne, one of the teachers there. And the thing that I really loved about the transition from the playground area and into the lunchroom, there's an amazing set of cubbies along the hallway for people to bring their lunch, to put their stuff. And there is an amazing hand washing station, so that it's just quick and easy to use. And they had activities in that cafeteria that night, and it was a very pleasant experience. It was crowded, it was active, it was busy, but you could hear things that were going on. So it really is a beautiful space, and I'm glad that all those thoughtful details were included. Thanks so much.
It really is. Ken and I were on the tour there too earlier, before it was all finished, and I almost couldn't get Ken out of the kitchen. He was so excited. I would say, just while we're talking about the bus loop, just for anybody watching at home, for the buses to leave, you know, to be able to exit, we have patrols, we have adult patrols that are needing to stop traffic on Cedar Lake Road so that the buses can get out and depart. And it's really important that our drivers honor those patrols and those flags and stop when they see them. I know people may be in a hurry, may be coming or going from work, but, and it's a new thing to see there, but it's there, and it's just, I just want to caution our community to please respect the patrols and the flags so that the buses can leave timely, and then you'll be able to go on your way.
Yeah. For the most part, what I've heard is that because of the separation of the, I guess they call it kiss and ride, and then the buses and the staff, it really does help a lot, so there's a lot of pressure. Equila, you see here, Equila, we have very happy employees, and like a real bright kitchen. They have windows for the first time ever in that area, so they can actually view the outside and see what's going on. But it's, all the equipment is prepared for the next phase, will be finished, scratched and cooking, high school kitchen in the next couple of years. So everything's really, and Ken, now they're looking for orders.
I'm looking for part-time work, I think.
Equila's media center, if you haven't been there, again, from what it used to look like and what it is now, I think, really bright, open, a lot of colors, more linear feed of storage, so that we can get more reading materials and things like that, and also different types of, again, seating and so forth that kids can learn and be part of a whole area where they could get together and just kind of read and things like that. And Next Century Classrooms, you can just see the variety of furniture. And at first, there was some skepticism about this, but I think a lot of teachers, if you talk to them, it just kind of works out real well. Some students like to be in the higher type chairs, some like to be in the lower chairs, some like to be on the benches, and they still, the teacher still has all control of the classroom. And the teacher could roam around, her desk is mobile, that they can get almost any spot, they can set up the classroom for any type of event that they want to have. And of course, the different types of chairs are the same that they were used. New main entry, and then of course, the main office for the high school, that's another, the main entry is not, wasn't 100% that we opened it, but it was done enough that we could have the students, and we're very happy with that. But again, you can see the MEA, we're going to be completing a lot of the items that still need to be done. But the main office is really bright, I've heard, I've heard many great things about, again, the high-low counters, you can see there, the variety of colors, they make it really open, people love to come there and just kind of know that they're welcome, and other things that they have to do in that office area. Conference rooms, they're not massive, but they work, they do the job for what is required for that space, as well as the main office visitors. See, we try to put color into it that represents our school colors. See, we try to put color into it that represents our school colors, orange and black and so forth, and just telling people be proud of being here at St. Louis Park, because this is there. The new tennis courts, if you ever played on it, people love it. It's great. And of course, the athletic training room, where it's been rescut a bit. I think coaches' meeting rooms and locker rooms, as you can see. It's just night and day according to any, it's just amazing, and the kids really are enjoying it. So Sarah's going to talk to you about the parade of schools and the next steps, and I'll talk to you about what's happening next.
Thank you, Tom. So I'm going to pop back a couple of slides here. So what you probably also noticed in many of these pictures is a lack of branding, logos, and messaging. That's also coming over MEA and the week following, leading into the parade of schools. So we've been working with our principals, our district leadership, and the users of the spaces, to get their input on what needs to fill the space, what is their voice, what needs to be in the space to make it feel like home. And so we've been doing a lot of input and working with our graphic designers now to really, what does this feel like for us? And so there will be, I'm calling it layers of treatment, of kind of a first layer that works with our community that we'll see for the parade of schools. And then we'll add on top of that as we go and as we get more comfortable in our space. I hearken it to, when you move into a house, you know, first you go through and you might put up curtains, and then you go live there a while, and then you put some more pictures on the wall, and then the longer you live there, the more you add to your house, right? And so you're going to see that come to life in our schools. And so the picture on the right, the main office, the visiting, main office visitors' seating, right now is a blank canvas. You'll see one layer come for the parade of schools, and as we go through this school year and subsequent years, you'll see it come to life more and more. So you'll see student artwork, you'll see student photos, you'll see branded logos, things like that, our mission, our core values, things like that, come to life, not only at the high school, but at Aquila and PSI, as we march towards parade of schools. So Parade of Schools is coming soon, Saturday, October 26th, 9:00 a.m. to noon. Publics invited to come in, kick the tires, take a look at all the great work. We've had a lot, a lot of progress happen at our sites. We're going to be opening Aquila, Park Spanish Immersion, and the high school offices. We're not going to be opening the high school athletic spaces, so the locker rooms, the training room that you saw tonight, we're going to not open those up during the parade of schools this time, simply because we're already doing construction on the new weight room and fitness center. And so it's kind of messy on that side of the building. So we're not going to open those spaces on this parade of schools, we're going to save that for when that whole entire section of the building is done. But we're inviting everybody to come in, take a look at the spaces, see what great things we have going on. We'll have some staff on hand to talk about how we use the space, what it's like. We'll have some students at elementary schools to talk about what it's like to be in the space, what it feels like to be a student and use the space. So everybody's invited to attend, we hope it's a great turnout. It's fall day, it's a Saturday morning, and we hope everybody can come out and join us. So Tom's going to talk a little bit more about what's coming next, because we have a whole lot more construction ahead of us.
Anne, you had a question before we move on to the next topic.
No, no, it's actually for Tom, but just one thing that, it's more of a comment, that doesn't really come through in the pictures from the high school, is that the new student services area, I thought was very compelling when I was visiting there, because really from a, sort of looks like this is mostly from, you know, benefiting adults, but there's a brand-new sort of wing all dedicated to our college and career. People are there, our counselors, our social workers. There's even a couple of sort of open areas for quiet rooms for, like, focus rooms for students.
Testing.
For testing or whatever. So that's really more of a one-stop shop than we've ever had for student services, and I thought that was, I hope that will be open for the open house.
Yes, it will.
Because that, I thought, was one of the most interesting and compelling, from a student perspective, areas in the new high school offices.
No, I do agree with you, and, you know, it's a lot of areas where students can go and test and just, you know, learn and move on the next steps. So as you can see here, the darker gray part is the projects that we've completed. Again, and then the middle part, and Sarah was kind enough to put it in three phases, completed projects, current projects, and then upcoming projects. And you can see, by the time we're going to be done this year, we will be halfway done with the projects that we committed to. And now we're on the tail end of the project itself. But those are the bigger ones. We understand that it's going to be a little bit more time to get those done, and just somewhat inconveniences, but we will never, never have it such that we can't open the school because of our construction. So that's our commitment. So moving forward, as Sarah said, by the end of January, we will have the fitness center, and we will have the new media center completed at the middle school, the media center, and the fitness center for the high school. Because of the fact that, again, I'm not giving excuses, but we've had some obstacles with rain and things like that, that we couldn't finish up our roofs that we wanted to and so forth, but contractors are working very hard to try to stay within the timelines that were given to them. Coming up next summer, what's out for bid right now is the early childhood project, the old PSI space. That's out for bid, and I will be coming back sometime in November, hopefully to ask for approval to start the project, and we're hoping to start the project sometime in January with abatements, and then going from there, February, March, getting things going for demolition, and starting sometime in May, starting the project itself and ending by August, before school starts next year, early childhood to move over to their new home in Central. Along with that one, the other project that will be going out for bid is a commitment that we're going to do the rest of the middle school. We're not going to try to do it in phases, because of the fact that we need to shut down a building when we do things like this, and we need to make sure that we're conscious of the summer programs that go on here at St. Louis Park. These schools are very, very busy in the summer. They don't shut down in June, like some people may have think that, so our commitment was in next year, we're going to be just focused on the middle school to get the performing arts going, to work on the expansion of the kitchen, to do the remaining, some of the remaining classrooms that we committed to, and to get the drive completed in front, so that we will have a flow similar to what you see at PSI, where the buses are coming in, in a separate entryway. The drop-offs is going to be a lot longer, so that we don't have cars out in Texas Avenue, where sometimes it could be dangerous. And then we will have more parking on the side, along with, of course, the new addition that we have. So we're focused on that, that project. Again, I hope I could come in sometime in January to ask for approval, and then we will start that when the snow melts sometime in April. We'll start building the structures of performing arts, the new kitchen at the middle school, and then start working on the groundwork. And then once school's out, then that's what we'll be focusing on, a lot, a big portion of the building itself, where we have to do shutdowns, like the gas lines, like the electrical, things like that, that we don't want. Safety is number one priority. We don't want people in the buildings when we do those things in the summertime. So we're fortunate enough that we are going to have that building unoccupied. And then when school starts again, we'll still have construction going on, because it takes several months for these big projects, but it'll be to the point where school can function, along with the construction will have its own separate ones. And then after that, the following year, we'll be focusing on the high school, and finally finishing up with the second half of Central, where the district office staff and adult options will be relocated in the next couple of years. Any questions on that?
Tom?
So as Nancy had mentioned, it was hard to get me out of PSI's kitchen, and that's because it's so much great tools there. Anyway, in 2021, we'll have the centralized kitchen completed. Would it be similar to the appliances and things that are in, let's say, PSI or?
Yeah, I mean, most, there'd be a lot of similarities, of course, because, you know, you're taking the cooking from the main kitchen and some of it, and taking it to the sites, which then they have to add the finished ingredients and also do some other additional baking, but it's going to be much, much larger, of course, and it will have probably more storage and things like that for the scratching. But it's going to have that same type of openness and new type of equipment for the scratching.
Did I see it to be summer of 2021?
Twenty, what's it in there? At the end of 2020, that's a full-year project. It'll be like almost fall.
Okay.
So, Tom, are you anticipating putting the air conditioning in the middle school this summer, so that it's ready for next fall, or is it later than that? What's the thought line on that?
I'm glad you asked that question, because I did forget to tell you that. Because I know there's been some questions of, you know, when is the air conditioning coming at the middle school and so forth? Remember when I was here several months ago, and I said that we weren't going to buy the chillers until this year, and I bought them earlier, so that we could save money, because of the fact that the cost of metals is going up and so forth? So we have the chillers, though, so I have no excuse of the chillers itself, but we've been putting a lot of pipe in the tunnels, and once school's out, next summer, we will then stop those up and put them in every classroom. So the goal is, when the schools open up and the teachers come back in end of August, September, it should be 100% air conditioning.
That'll make some people happy.
I think it will. I think it will. The other two things that I did forget to tell you real quick is, we have a request proposal that we're out for bid now for solar panels. So I would love to come here sometime in the future, talk about the sustainability and what we're doing with zero carbon footprint, reducing it down, and also recycling program. We have new containers coming for each site that are going to have our St. Louis Park logo, but it's going to be much more organized for recycling.
Well, Sarah and Tom, I just want to thank you for all your good work for us. Tom, it looks like you've got a lot to still do, but you've done so much, and we're so grateful. I know how hard it is to keep all of that on schedule and tracking, and then you get weather delays and other delays that just get in the way. So we're very grateful for your patience and your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So next up, we have the superintendent evaluation summary. School Board had a closed meeting on September 27th, which is allowed by law, in order to do our annual evaluation of the superintendent. And since this is our first regular meeting since that evaluation, it is our procedure and our practice to have a summary of that review shared by the coach here, which is your time.
And the vice chair, not your co-chair. Right.
Promoting you early.
Yeah, let's not rush things. Yes, as Chair Gore said, I wanted to share with the public some of the details of our annual evaluation of Superintendent O'Sai. We do, this is, I think, one of the most important functions of our board, is to review the superintendent, to let him or her know what's working, what's not working, what's progressing, what's not progressing, and to, just, it's part of our relationship with, in this case, Superintendent O'Sai. And so we do this evaluation based on a few factors. First of all, we look at our strategic plan, which has been in effect, this one is from 2015 to 2020, and so we look at the steps of our strategic plan and the goals that have been associated with those, as to whether or not the superintendent is meeting those goals or progressing towards meeting those goals. And then we also look at a few different areas, including relationship with the school board, let's see, fiscal management of the district, community and public relations, effective leadership of staff, and management of the central office. And so within each of those categories, we can note whether we believe that those goals have been met, not met, or exceeded. And I am very happy to report that within all of these, the board was very happy with Superintendent O'Sai's work in the district. We think that by and large, he is making great progress towards our strategic goals, or our strategic plan goals, and that he is doing a great job in all of those areas that we mentioned. Some specific kind of notes to highlight is that we were all, by and large, very happy with the start time task force that was led by Superintendent O'Sai last year, along with Sarah Thompson, and lots of other people participated in that. But we were very happy with that process, particularly the engagement of our community, including our students in that process. And we are particularly happy that the work didn't end when the decision was made to put a new start time in effect for the next coming school year, that in fact, that work continues even more in depth with the task force Superintendent O'Sai mentioned during his report, that we want to take this opportunity with this change that's being made to really do it in the best way possible. So we are grateful for that work that he is doing. We are also grateful for the work that he has done to foster a great relationship with all of us. He meets with many of us on a regular basis, he sends us weekly updates, he takes our calls and our texts and our questions. I don't know if I would say happily, but certainly timely. And encourages us to all be open and honest. We are very happy with the hires that he has made this year. We think they are excellent additions to the district, and they are definitely serving the students and the community well. We are very proud of the renovations that have been happening and how we have had the opportunity to spend the money that our community gave us through the referendum, and so his supervision and oversight of that work seems to be going very well. We are, we know that we have continued work to do in the, our strategic goals, particularly around student achievement, student discipline, and so we are, we've noted where those continued efforts need to be made. And overall, I would think, I think that to sum it up to the theme for, is it a theme for this year, Aston, if we would call it that, the I am, because we are, we've heard this several times, and it was part of a teacher, the welcome back day and professional development and so many of the meetings that we have, I think that that really sums up, you know, our feeling about this work, that we are all in this together, and we're really happy with how things have gone this past year, and we're looking forward to another great few years. Is there anything else I need to add there?
No, that's a great summary, Mary. In fact, the review was so uniformly positive that we then entered into negotiations with Aston to renew his contract, which would have expired next year. And so later on the action agenda, we'll be talking about Aston's new contract, because we are absolutely pleased with what he has brought to the district, and we want it to continue. So next up, we have, yes, you may.
Chair Gore, members of the board, I just want to thank you all for your leadership, and I'm truly honored to be the superintendent here in the St. Louis Park Public Schools. As I think about my time here and have started my third year, one of the things that has stood out to me is just the honesty and commitment that each of you have for the students and families here, and the permission and opportunity that you've not only given me, but my colleagues here in the district, to lead courageously, to meet the very aggressive goals that we have outlined in our strategic plan. I think something that I'm most thankful for is the continued feedback and the formative feedback. You know, I appreciated the summative evaluation, but the great thing about it was that there were no surprises, that everything that was shared in that summative evaluation had been shared with me throughout the course of the year. And that truly speaks to the relationship, you know. Mary, you identified one of the goal areas, relationship, and that's a reciprocal relationship, right? You know, and I appreciate just the continued conversation, the continued encouragement and motivation to meet the needs of all of our learners here. And I'm, I have a laser-like focus on the work that we need to do in the areas of academic achievement, academic progress, and making sure that, you know, it's not predictable by the color of your skin on if you're going to be removed from the classroom or not. So we have a lot of work to still do, and I'm excited to continue to do that work in St. Louis Park Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Aston. So next up, we have the policy development, first reading 524, Internet Acceptable Use and Safety. I'm going to just take these one at a time.
So for policy 524, Internet Use and Safety, MSBA does have a recommendation to edit So for policy 524, Internet Use and Safety, MSBA does have a recommendation to edit, a small recommendation to edit the social media platforms, removing MySpace and adding other platforms such as Instagram and Snapchat. I do believe that we have some additional thoughts that may be presented tonight. We also will be presenting the procedure at the second reading at the next board meeting.
Chair Gore, members of the board, we, and we can talk a little bit about it this evening, but as a, as a staff, we believe it would be appropriate and would like to get your perspective on creating, currently, our policy 524 governs not only students but adults as well, and we believe it would be prudent to separate both policies so that we can provide more specific information as it relates to the implementation of this policy for adults and really isolate what's necessary for students. So what we would recommend is that we create a, I think we could even call it a number of policy 424 around adults, Internet Acceptable Use and Safety, and we would also like to, within that adult policy, do some work around social media as well. So I don't know, Tom or Rick, if you wanted to add anything to that.
Chair, members of the board, superintendent, I think you covered it. That's, that was the extent of the conversation. Try, and this would be the first of a couple policies where we separate a policy that, you know, may apply to both students and staff, but is either sitting in the 500 series, where staff wouldn't think to look for it, or is sitting in the 400 series, so it doesn't show up as policies that apply to students.
I think that that's completely appropriate, and I can't believe that we haven't thought about that before, and this is why you get good reviews, because this seems like a great idea. There should be different expectations for, perhaps, for our students.
Do you envision that you'll come back in two weeks with policy 524 broken into two policies, or do you envision that you're going to need more time for that, so that we need to adjust our schedule?
We think we probably can come back with 524 as a second reading, and then 424 as a first reading.
Excellent.
One comment, one question. Comment, MySpace is officially dead now, but it's off of our policies. The question had to do with the stricken court case. I saw this a couple days ago, I apologize for not getting it in before the, before today. Is there, is there a specific reason why that one, JS versus Bethlehem Area School District was removed? It's one of the older ones, there's another one that's pulled there, but I didn't know if there's a specific reason to know about it.
At this time, I don't have the specific reason for why that was struck or recommended to be struck by the Minnesota School Board Association, but I, we could certainly check into that, and like the next meeting, we'll have information as to why that court case was taken off.
I just have, I kind of had a list of questions about this that are maybe put off for two different policies with different procedures coming up, but the, I want the questions to be out there so that we, that we can answer them at that time. So my questions were, how are we educating staff and students and parents about the limited educational purpose of our district internet access and our computers? When and how often do students and parents sign the internet use agreement that was included with our policy, and with what supporting documentation? And then, assuming that the policy does cover student use of their district Google accounts, even when they're not at school, because Google accounts aren't listed in here specifically, I'm glad for the MySpace being taken out, but we've added some other, there's some other things added by MSBA, social media platforms, but Google accounts aren't listed specifically, but how do we let parents and students know our expectations about acceptable use, given that that's a tool that people are using that really, maybe didn't even exist when this policy was written? And so, and do parents have, this is just a technical question, do parents have access to student login information so that they can monitor that use when students aren't at school? Those are the questions that I had broadly.
Thank you. We can probably come back to those when all these policies come back, but thank you for getting them out there and, anyone else? All right, next up is policy 616, School District System Accountability.
So for policy 616, MSBA does have recommended changes. One of the notable changes is the removal of No Child Left Behind Act, and replacing that language with federal law, so just listing it as federal law throughout the policy.
Is that Minnesota Statute, the one about the world's best test, the world's best workforce? Because doesn't that also require a committee, to form a public committee every couple years or something like that?
Thank you for that question. Every year, we do an annual report or update to the school board, and actually, it's the Minnesota Department of Education has combined what they call our World's Best Workforce Annual Report with our Annual Achievement and Integration Report. So if you recall, last school year, when we presented to the board, it was a combined World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration Report. So we do that annually, we post that presentation on our district website, required by statute, and we, currently, the mechanism or vehicle we use from a convening body of stakeholders is we utilize our district parent advisory committee, and, you know, that is something that we can continue to look at if that is the appropriate infrastructure to engage around this topic, but that's what we've done in the past.
Just as a, just as a comment, it seems like this committee would have a charge almost anything, curriculum, graduate standards, a lot of things, maybe I need to think about a little more. But I'm wondering, just for instance, under, at one point, page 65D to D, it says something about advising the school board about development of the annual budget. This won't be like replacing our current financial, what do we call it?
Yeah, the financial advisory committee. So, to your point, the way that this is written currently, or at least the recommended changes, offers quite a bit of, it allows this governing body or this advisory committee, as they, not the governing body, but this advisory committee, as they describe it, quite a bit of responsibility in a number of aspects of the school district. And one of those pieces being, you know, recommending that this, this advisory committee advise the school board about the development of the annual budget. I would recommend that the school board has made some very intentional decision around how that happens here in St. Louis Park, and that I would recommend that we continue to keep that structure. I think it's written here this way specifically because, you know, in an organization, you would want the instructional needs or the goals or the strategic direction to drive, you know, the budget expenditures, but I'm confident, you know, the direction that we're going in around our budget planning process, that we can find alignment through some of the current structures that we already have in place.
That's enough now.
Yeah, I would note that it does call for the advisory committee and that, as Aston says, we've been using the district advisory committee, but I would suggest that Mary and I and Aston, and whoever else you want to bring to the table, maybe sit down and look at the statute that mandates this and compare it with this policy, and sort of see what we have to have, what we don't have to have, what fits us, what doesn't fit us. Because this, I had the same reaction, Jim, it seemed a little overreaching for the advisory committee, but if that's what the statute says, that's what the statute says. And we just have to be sure that we aren't agreeing to more than, than we have to, as the board, frankly. And then, there are some issues in this policy about how we form and who's on that district advisory committee, and if what we're doing is different than what the statute says, I'd rather adapt this to reflect what we're doing. So, I think it does need a little more work, whether it's ready for an action item next time or another reading, I think it needs another reading. We're agreed on that, I can look at the nodding heads. Okay, so that's policy 616. Next up is the 806 Crisis Management Policy.
For policy 806, MSBA does not have any additional recommended changes, or any recommended changes.
Have, can I just ask, and has there needed to be any, having moved PSI from one building to another, did that have any impact on what we needed to do for any crisis management change in our policy, or is this not that site-specific? I can't recall as I read it how that might impact.
So, the policy's not that, it's not as site-specific, but it certainly has impacted, for example, our emergency evacuation site. So now, in the past, Park Spanish Immersion would use the high school as an emergency evacuation site, and now Westwood Lutheran Church serves as their emergency evacuation site. So there are certain things that aren't necessarily as detailed in the policy that were impacted because of that move. You know, I would say that certainly the language in this policy reflects the procedures and process that we have in place. You know, it calls it out as school and emergency response team, we've internally been calling it building emergency response team or BERT, but, you know, all of the, all of the content within that is.
I'm wondering with this policy, Superintendent Osai, if you could, have we consulted or chatted with St. Louis Park Police Department, a St. Louis Park Fire Department about this policy, just to make sure that we would be setting out procedures and practices that would be realistically what might happen, or that they would agree would be the proper way to do things? Or was this policy another MSBA policy that we just adapted? I'm curious.
Thank you for the question, and what I would say is, as we look at the policy, you know, particularly B elements of the district crisis management plan, and you'll see a number of different emergency responses, these are universal responses that we certainly practice and utilize and that we work with. I would say we work specifically with our emergency responders, St. Louis Park Police and Fire, around our evacuation procedures. We've spent a lot of time over the past couple of years working with St. Louis Park. It's described as lockdown procedures here, but we've been evolving to more of an option-based approach, you know, recognizing that lockdown is generally the first response, but knowing that with all of the research out there, that providing staff and students with options in those types of situations help to save lives. So to your question, we certainly work with our emergency responders around these different universal response procedures, and they're aware, and we share strategy, and they support us in making sure that what we're doing is the most efficient practice to keep students and staff safe.
And I think it really helps that we have such a good relationship with our building school resource officers, because they are integral team members, school site administration as well as at the district level. And Chief Percy has talked about additional training, and we've been a site for training for emergencies in the past, and it's something he has expressed doing again in the future. And we did talk about that two years ago at one of our city school district joint meetings. So it's, it's certainly something that is always part of our awareness, as we want to ensure that our children are safe, staff too. And I would just, having watched the candidate forum for school board, I wanted to note here that the policy includes that we will participate in the required, well, in a required number of drills and practice sessions throughout the school year, and I just wanted to clarify that the required number of drills and practice sessions is sort of mandated by the state. It's not our choice, it's mandated by law, what drills and practice sessions we have for our students, is that true?
Yep, that's correct.
Right, so first, I want to, before we move on, I want to give a special thank you to Westwood Lutheran Church for being willing to serve as our off-site evacuation location for PSI. They're such a good community partner and always have been, so we're very grateful to them. Next up is the second reading of policy 514, Bullying Prohibition, 515, Protection and Privacy of Pupil Record, and 522, Sex Non-Discrimination. By my memory, there's no follow-up from the last time we looked at these, so is there any discussion point before we move on? All right, then they will come up on our action agenda. Next up is the consent agenda. Is there, yep, go ahead.
On 514, just the first page of 514, there's, I think we had this with another couple policies as well, we had extra digits on the last revised date.
Florida, do you see what he's talking about? If you look up, there's a, you prob, I'm sure you inherited this, just, can you, can you see where the dates go wrong on the last revised date?
Yes, I'll revise that and have that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll just, when we get to the action item, we'll just assume that that'll be corrected as part of our motion. Okay, fair enough, Joe?
Thank you.
Thank you. So next up is the consent agenda, is there anything on the consent agenda that anybody would like to pull off for discussion? Hearing no one, is there a motion to approve consent agenda? Moved by Ann, is there a second? Seconded by Karen, all in favor? Aye. The consent agenda carries seven oh. Next up is the action agenda, and first up on the action agenda is the employment agreement superintendent, superintendent. I'll just speak to that first before we have the motion. As I alluded to earlier, we were, as a board unanimously thrilled with Superintendent Osai and how well he has been leading us. By law, we can only do three-year contracts with superintendents, and so his contract would be expiring at the end of June, and we entered into negotiations and have negotiated a contract that's on the action agenda for another three-year term. At, at, he was not a tough negotiator. He essentially asked and really asked to have a contract that is essentially similar to the same salaries and benefit changes that our teachers received on average, you know, each teacher's in a different step and a different level, and their average can be, their specifics can be different, but, Rick, it is my understanding that on average, the teacher salary increase was, was what, 1.66 for the first year and 1.88 for the second year? Am I remembering that correctly?
Chair Gore is very close, I had 1.77 in the first year, 1.88 in the second year.
And so that average is what we have used in Superintendent Osai's contract on a salary basis. We also added a notice provision that is similar to maybe in other district, other superintendent contracts, but I know it's very similar to what 287 has, which really allows for the school board to put, and this is not unique, this is not specific to Aston, although it is at this point in time, but it is, I think, good practice going forward with all future superintendents, that we give notice to the superintendent about, if it's not going well, you know, let's make a decision in time for both people to extricate themselves gracefully in the superintendent's head to get another job. I don't think that'll be an issue here, but it does kind of flag us that it's time to start negotiating the next contract, and that really maybe it's better, it's better practical import for us as a, as a school board. Mary, do you have anything?
I will just throw out that I very much respected Superintendent Osai, Superintendent Osai's commitment to aligning his new contract with the teacher's new contract, that I think that that speaks to his integrity and that speaks to his commitment to our entire district, to our community, to his fiscal management for that matter, that, no, he was not a tough negotiator, but I do, in that respect per se, that I do, I think that this is a fair contract, and I'm happy that we're able to do this now, and I just, I think it makes sense. I was part of the one, or one of the people who kind of pushed to do it now, because having just come off of his evaluation, it makes sense that we all take the opportunity to recommit to each other, so to speak, for the next period.
And just kind of adding onto that, so I do appreciate Aston's approach to this process, and I appreciated in the last two years his leadership on the job. It's been incredible, the growth that he's shown in these two years. And he started from a pretty high point. So it continues to go up, and I'm really appreciative of that. I should also say that we took a look at how his salary, even with these steps that are similar to what the teachers got aligned with other metro area superintendents, and that was aligned, aligned well. So I just want to make sure the public knows that we did take a look at that, making sure that it was competitive for this great superintendent that we have.
I would also like to express my gratitude, both for Aston, but also to Mary and Nancy for their leadership in making this contract happen, again, with little drama. And I know it's, it's hard work for the chair. And as Mary mentioned earlier, when we were talking about the review, you know, supervising the superintendent is one of the most important pieces of the board's job, and for the chair in particular, this piece of renegotiating a contract is a big undertaking and a really important piece of the job. So we're grateful to you, Nancy, and thank you. And we're sad that you're leaving us, but happy that you're leaving us in excellent hands. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ann. All right. Yes, you know.
Chair Gore's members of the board, I just would like to echo the appreciation to each of you, and I know that a couple of you, both of the people I had the chance to meet with most often, both Nancy and Mary highlighted the fact that I wasn't a tough negotiator. And here's the thing about that, right? So it's easy to have these types of conversations when there's a positive foundation of the relationship that exists. And if, just at our last meeting, it just kind of hit me as you all were sharing your reflection, when we talked about the negotiation process with the teachers, and how, you know, when Rick summarized it in being that it was overall, certainly there were challenging things that needed to be discussed, but because of the strong relationship that's been developed over time and the focus on students, right, that, you know, things that appear to be difficult or can, you know, be difficult generally are worked out smoothly when the vision of all parties are aligned, focused on students. So I continue to be thankful and appreciative of your leadership and for the opportunity that you provided me, provided me to continue to lead here in St. Louis Park.
All right. Thank you. Such a pleasure to work with you. I'm going to have to haunt you when I'm gone. Next up is another labor agreement. This is with Nutrition Services. Why don't we take the presentation first, Rick, and then we'll go on and do the motion.
Chair members of the board, superintendent, this again, we started off the cycle, we have, I think, seven contracts that are up. The teacher's contract came to the board on the 23rd. Nutrition Services is coming tonight. I believe we have Custodial coming at the next board meeting, and then one or two meetings after that, after the Spark Group, our professional group can ratify their contract, we'll have that one coming in November. So things are rolling right along. The Nutrition Group, we got together and we met over the summer. You know, some of the things that we're facing, like we are with our Custodial Group, is the challenge of hiring food service employees to work in our Nutrition Services kitchens and feed the kids and be another caring adult in their lives. The challenge we're always facing with Nutrition Services is that it's, they work about 172 days, they work about, you know, five hours a day, and so, you know, in some ways, this is kind of a labor of love, because they're not, even though their hourly rate might be, you know, comparable, when you look at the number of hours they get, they're not getting 2,080 hours a year, you know. So, you know, that's a challenge that we're facing. So we work really hard to try to keep our salaries competitive and that, try to keep people, so that we can attract and retain staff. So this contract, we worked on our salary schedule, we again took off, you know, some of those starting salaries, so we would actually have a little higher starting salary. That's, I guess, a negotiations trick to get the salary steps, the starting steps higher without, you know, driving a lot of money into the whole schedule to get there. So we're down, we're able now to get our schedule down from what I think might have been 16 steps to get to the top. It's now a 10-step schedule, so nine years to the top and much more competitive. We also spent some money trying to catch this group up with our, the health insurance contributions. You know, over the years, as you know, one of our strategies has been to try to make all of our labor groups look like you work for the same employer, and we're trying to bring all of those much more closely in line. And this, this puts a little more money into the benefit plan, so that food service people are, you know, are competitive in the benefits as well. There was a bunch of really good cleanup on and thoughtful conversations about uniforms and clothing allowance, and how we, you know, come up with a new plan for that. And we also are looking at how do we incent people to take advantage of the deferred compensation program? Because when we looked at our Nutrition Group, nobody was contributing. And so that's an important three-legged stool towards retirement. We want to make sure that, you know, our people are taken care of, not only, you know, on the days they're working here, but, you know, in their older ages, they're looking at retirement as well. So all of Tammy Borgon, the Nutrition Manager is pleased. Patricia Magnusson sat with me on most of these sessions, and she supports the contract as well.
So it is recommended that the school board approve the employment agreement between Independent School District Number 283 and the School Services Employees SEIU, Local 284 CTW, for school nutrition personnel for the 2019-2020 and 2020 to 2021 school years as presented. Is there a motion by Jim? Is there a second? Seconded by Mary. Is there any discussion?
I just had a couple of questions, but it's more of a discussion. This contract will take us up through 2021, which would put us right at the cusp of the new kitchens, I suspect, where it would probably look different, because the labor's going to look different in the hours and things and so forth.
Yes, that's true. And so one of the things we also have to do, because we don't have enough to do, is we have to be meeting with Tammy Borgon and her team about what are the positions you're going to need. This contract has two titles, cook, lead cook. And I'm, you know, we're, I'm not sure, and I'm, we're working with Tammy and her team to look at what, well, you know, are you going to need, are you going to need a higher level of chef or production manager or something? And so we're looking at our salaries, you know, our job classifications, and then what would be the market pay for those new titles that we'd have to then negotiate mid-year and put into the contract.
Which almost in theory could be different from this contract, as far as cook and lead cook, right?
Correct. I mean, so the, one of the things that, you know, the administration and the school board and the management rights clause of the contract has, you know, we get to determine the organizational structure, technology, equipment, and all those things. So we get to decide, you know, there's a product, there's a nutrition manager, there's a nutrition supervisor, there's a lead cook and a cook. That's their structure now, but as we move into the new service model, we may need five titles or seven titles. I don't know yet, but we, you know, we would then have the ability to create those titles and then propose the salary ranges for those new titles, and they would more than likely, you know, somehow or another mesh into this current structure.
Anyone else? All right. So a motion on the table is for the Nutrition Services contract. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie, 7-0. Next up is approval of the second reading of Policies 514 Bullying Prohibition, 515 Protection and Privacy of People Record, and 522 Sex Non-Discrimination. It is recommended that the school board approve the second reading of Policies 514 Bullying Prohibition, 515 Protection and Privacy of People Record, and 522 Sex Non-Discrimination as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Karen, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ken?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie, 7-0. We are to Communications and Transmittals. Go ahead, Karen.
Thank you, Chair Gore. I just wanted to let the community know that on Monday, October 21st, we are hosting our first listening session between 6:30 and 8:00 p.m. at Lenox Room 109. It will be myself and Lucy and Mary Tombeck to listen to the community about things that they are interested in. We are not talking about anything related to the school board elections still. So please come and join us, we want to hear what's on your mind. Thank you.
On October 16th, I think that's a Wednesday, there's going to be United Nation World Food Day, which will be held at Lenox, and I do believe it's at 6 o'clock times a three AM. It has an update, but anyway, Julie, our, our, not snack, seed group is putting that on, and what they're doing is harvesting all of their veggies from the gardens, the community gardens, and they're going to prepare them, and then the community comes out and eat and learn about food and do some wonderful things there. So come out, enjoy it, 6 o'clock.
What was the date of the date?
October 20, October 16th, Wednesday, October 16th.
Thanks, Ken. Anybody else?
I wanted to give my monthly update from the Association for Metropolitan School Districts. We had our Board of Directors meeting on October 4th. We had another speaker, I talked a month ago or so about the census, they had another speaker on the census, so just reiterating the importance of the census and the work that the school districts can do in promoting the census and the importance of the funding that comes from the census. And then there was also a presentation from the Minnesota Department of Revenue on the Voss Report. So Bobby Voss was a, he was actually my state legislator when I was growing up, and he, he wanted to know, he wanted to know about property tax burden. What, what, what does the burden of property tax, and how can we compare that in various people? So now, he's sort of long gone, but the Voss Report remains to an annual report of the Department of Revenue, in which there's a calculation of essentially income in the denominator and property tax paid in the numerator, giving you essentially a property tax burden. So this was a super interesting report. I could not give you the, all the details right now, but it would be, it would be interesting for you all to just peek at the, at the slides that are on amsd.org and just see what you can kind of glean from this. It's pretty broad, it's not district-specific, but you can see by counties where the, where the burdens are higher, that are, it is super interesting. So always take a look at those slides, because they're, it's good information. And I'd like just to acknowledge-
Contract and retain staff. So this contract, we worked on our salary schedule, we again took off, you know, some of those starting salaries, so we would actually have a little higher starting salary. That's, I guess, a negotiations trick to get the salary steps, the starting steps higher without, you know, driving a lot of money into the whole schedule to get there. So we're down, we're able now to get our schedule down from what I think might have been 16 steps to get to the top. It's now a 10-step schedule, so nine years to the top and much more competitive. We also spent some money trying to catch this group up with, with our, the health insurance contributions. You know, over the years, as you know, one of our strategies has been to try to make all of our labor groups look like you work for the same employer, and we're trying to bring all of those much more closely in line. And this, this puts a little more money into the benefit plan, so that food service people are, you know, are competitive in the benefits as well. There was a bunch of really good cleanup on and thoughtful conversations about uniforms and clothing allowance, and how we, you know, come up with a new plan for that. And we also are looking at how do we incent people to take advantage of the deferred compensation program? Because when we looked at our Nutrition Group, nobody was contributing. And so that's an important three-legged stool towards retirement. We want to make sure that, you know, our people are taken care of, not only, you know, on the days they're working here, but, you know, in their older ages, they're looking at retirement as well. So all of Tammy Borgon, the Nutrition Manager is pleased. Patricia Magnusson sat with me on most of these sessions, and she supports the contract as well.
So it is recommended that the school board approve the employment agreement between Independent School District Number 283 and the School Services Employees SEIU, Local 284 CTW, for school nutrition personnel for the 2019-2020 and 2020 to 2021 school years as presented. Is there a motion by Jim? Is there a second? Seconded by Mary. Is there any discussion?
I just had a couple of questions, but it's more of a discussion. This, this contract will take us up through 2021, which would put us right at the cusp of the new kitchens, I suspect, where it would probably look different, because the labor's going to look different in the hours and things and so forth.
Yes, that's true. And so one of the things we also have to do, because we don't have enough to do, is we have to be meeting with Tammy Borgon and her team about what are the positions you're going to need. This contract has two titles, cook, lead cook. And I'm, you know, we're, I'm not sure, and I'm, we're working with Tammy and her team to look at what, well, you know, are you going to need, are you going to need a higher level of chef or production manager or something? And so we're looking at our salaries, you know, our job classifications, and then what would be the market pay for those new titles that we'd have to then negotiate mid-year and put into the contract.
Which almost in theory could be different from this contract, as far as cook and lead cook, right?
Correct. I mean, so the, one of the things that, you know, the administration and the school board and the management rights clause of the contract has, you know, we get to determine the organizational structure, technology, equipment, and all those things. So we get to decide, you know, there's a product, there's a nutrition-
It will be myself and Halsey Mary Tambek to listen to the community about things that they are interested in. We are not talking about anything related to the school board elections still. So please come and join us. We want to hear what's on your mind. Thank you.
On October 16th, I think that's a Wednesday, there's going to be United Nation World Food Day, which will be held at Lenox. And I do believe it's at 6 o'clock, times it says to me. It doesn't have an update. But anyway, Julie, our, our, um, not snack, um, seed group is putting that on. And what they're doing is harvesting all of their veggies from the gardens, the community gardens, and they're going to prepare them. And then the community comes out and eat and learn about food and do some wonderful things there. So come up, enjoy it. 6 o'clock.
What was the date of the date?
October 20, October 16th, Wednesday, October 16th.
Thanks, Ken. Anybody else?
I wanted to give my monthly update from the Association for Metropolitan School Districts. We had our Board of Directors meeting on October 4th. We had another speaker, I just talked a month ago or so about the census, they had another speaker on the census. So just reiterating the importance of the census and the work that the school district can do in promoting the census and the importance of the funding that comes from the census. And then there was also a presentation from the Minnesota Department of Revenue on the VAS report. So Bobby VAS was a, he was actually my state legislator when I was growing up. And he, he wanted to know, he wanted to know about property tax burden. What does the burden of property taxes, and how can we compare that in various people? So now, he's sort of long gone, but the VAS report relates to an annual report of the Department of Revenue in which there's a calculation of essentially income in the denominator and property tax paid in numerator and giving you essentially a property tax burden. So this was a super interesting report. I could not give you the, all the details right now, but it would be, it would be interesting for you all to just peek at the, at the slides that are on amsd.org and just see what you can kind of glean from this. It's pretty broad, it's not district specific, but you can see by counties where the, where the burdens are higher or lower. It is super interesting. So always take a look at those slides because they're, it's good information. And I'd like just to acknowledge that today is Indigenous Peoples' Day and that our district is on land and formerly belonged to indigenous people and that our district has a number of students and families who really want to acknowledge and celebrate their indigenous heritage and identities today. Indigenous Peoples' Day. So I want to make sure we do that stuff.
Thank you, Ann. I have two more quick calendar items if people are trying to fill their calendar in with wonderful things that we're telling you about. You know, it's election season and there are four open seats on the school board. And the school board League of Women Voters Candidate Forum happened October 1st. You can get that on YouTube and watch it if you missed it. The cities, the League of Women Voters Forum for the city elections, which includes mayor and two at-large council members, is happening this coming Thursday, which is October 17th, at City Hall. And I believe it starts at 7:00, right? So you can either show up or you can, you know, catch it taped or live streaming somewhere, I'm sure. The other item that's happening is on October 22nd, there's a joint meeting between the city council and the school board. We do this a couple of times a year and this is our fall. It's the 21st?
Tuesday.
Is it from today?
It's the 22nd.
It's the 22nd, Mary.
It's Tuesday. I'm so, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Mary, we got it on Mary's calendar now because she's going to, because I'm out of town, so we really want Mary there as the vice chair. And it's, it's October 22nd and it's at Lenox so that we'll have a chance to show the city council who may not have been to Lenox, what work we've done at Lenox, which I'm excited about. I believe it starts at 5:30 with dinner and then the meeting may start at, I'm not quite sure, 6 maybe, but check your, check your agendas when you get them to court.
Mary, Mary, what time does it start? Correct that? I believe it is 5:30 dinner.
Hey, I was confusing the listening session and the city council meeting. Let's all cut Mary some slack. Thank you.
Mary is busy next week working on our behalf and we thank you, Mary. Back-to-back meetings, listening session the 21st, joint school board, city council meeting on the 22nd. So anyone else have anything to share? Nope. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Karen, second. Seconded by Ann. All in favor? Aye. Carrie, 7-0.